Commissioner Brady, we are live.
Good evening and welcome to the December 14th, 2020 Sandusky City Commission Meeting. Prior to the next meeting, we'll have an invocation offered by myself followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask for your wisdom as we make decisions in this meeting. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to wisely evaluate our options, considering the pros and cons. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Close now. Okay.
Ms. Briggs is now joining.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Could I say?
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Meinzler?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of November 23rd, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move to accept the minutes of the November 23rd meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Once again, we're holding the Sandusky City Commission meeting electronically. Commissioners and staff are in attendance through an Internet hookup in a variety of safe locations, and some are in attendance at City Hall. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk, who will answer those that pertain to legislation as that legislation comes before, and as well as provide a response to any other audience questions from the appropriate staff. I'd also like to acknowledge the fact that those participating in this meeting in person are doing so with the appropriate distancing and face mask. Ms. Briggs, are there any questions from the public that pertain to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President, we haven't received any comments or questions about tonight's agenda.
All righty. We have two public hearings this evening, Commissioners. I believe they both will be conducted by Mr. Volts. First public hearing is the vacation of a portion of Fourth Street. As this is a public hearing, I'll ask that any questions submitted by the public to be read and answered at the conclusion of this hearing, along with questions from Commissioners. Mr. Volts, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some brief context. This is, the first one is a petition for vacation of Fourth Street, located between Parcels 5700087, 5705556, 5702045. Those are to the north, and 570087, 570555, and those are to the south. The site is off of the unimproved alley roadway near the new school between Third and Fourth Street, or Fifth Street. Right-of-way would be Fourth Street if it was improved. You can see it on the location map, the parcels, as well as the zone map. All in conclusion, Plan Saff doesn't have objection to the City Commission approving this vacation, as it will not adversely impact the adjoining properties, and all the adjacent property owners have signed the petition. This right-of-way is no longer of use for the public. If approved, this by the City Commission, the parcels must be combined after vacation so that there remain no landlocked parcel. That's it for that petition application. Would you like me to proceed with the second?
I think, Mr. Volts, I think we'll deal with these one at a time. I'm just going to open this up to, if Ms. Springs has any questions from the, from the general public regarding this public hearing, they should be read now, Ms. Springs.
I didn't receive any questions in relation to this public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments or questions for Mr. Volts regarding the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Volts, that we touched on this. I think I understand this to be the case, but right, adjacent to the parcels we're discussing, there is another unused right-of-way, I think it was maybe Butler Street, I remember the names a bit offhand, I'm sorry, but we've talked about using that at some point in the future as a connector pathway, and I want to make certain that those, that that right-of-way is unimpeded by the action we're taking a look at today. Thank you.
Through you, President Brady, to Commissioner Murray. That is correct. This would have no impact on the Arthur Street right-of-way between Fifth Street and Third Street.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinzler.
This will probably be directed at Mr. Volts as well. This makes sense, but I just wanted to make sure to clarify, in the strategic plan, it mentions that this area should be used for residential or infill, the term infill, and I see the zoning is going to change to commercial recreation. Does that fall in the infill description?
Through you, President Brady, to Commissioner Meinzler. The zoning will not change in relation to this application. The underlying zoning will just be kind of incorporated into the vacated area. The owners do not have plans as of right now for what they intend to use the properties for, but our plans in the future do fall in line with our strategic plan and master plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could we, Mr. Volts, if you would, put up on the screen so we can see what you're talking about to this public hearing? Do we have a drawing or a, there you go.
Yeah, there you go.
So what is it, would you, would you again say what you're talking about? Just go through this again, what's going to be done with this property?
Sure. Through you, President Brady, to the rest of the Commission. The property will be split down the middle between every parcel. Right now, it's right-of-ways. It will be split down the middle between each parcel, and half the property owners will get half the parcels. At that point, the parcels will need to be combined to the properties along Third Street so that there is no landlocked parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, Commissioners? There are no additional comments or questions. I'll declare this public hearing closed. Our second public hearing regards the vacation of an alley south of 1404 and 1424 Third Street, kind of in the same neighborhood. Mr. Volts, once again, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is related to the previous application. This is the alley that is located between, behind 1404 through 1424 Third Street, and the parcels previously mentioned on Fourth Street. The site is just off the unimproved Arthur Street, as previously mentioned, and all of the applicants, or all of the adjacent property owners have signed this petition as well. Plan Saff has no objection to the City Commission approving the vacation of the alley, as it will not adversely impact the adjoining properties, and all of the adjacent property owners have signed the petition. Thank you.
Ms. Briggs, are there any comments or questions from the general public regarding this, this public hearing?
President Brady, I did not receive any comments in relation to this public hearing.
Commissioners, questions or comments? I think it probably goes without saying that this is certainly an underdeveloped area of our, of the neighborhood, and I think it is our hope, and I think it is the applicant's hope that this will make the property able to be developed in the near future. I know they don't have immediate plans for it, but I'm hopeful that the action that we're taking tonight will make that a more, more viable option to develop that land into, into something productive and, and more beneficial for our tax base. Any additional comments or questions, Commissioners? There are no further comments. I'll declare this public hearing closed. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have four consent items to consider this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of these items to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I would, I understand this is the appropriate time to make a motion with respect to item, Items 1A and 1B of the regular agenda, and I would ask that those be modified such that they not be passed as emergency legislation at this meeting. Thank you.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you follow the rule on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Ms. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole? Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I have a question for Law Director. Obviously, I am in favor of what just transpired, but I need to understand why is that necessary? Could we not have simply brought up the legislation under first reading? And the reason I ask is, I'm trying to determine whether or not we're setting some kind of precedent where we have to do this every time that we don't agree with the recommendation of Mr. Snyder or whoever provides it, with regard to how we handle motions?
Sure. Through you, President Brady, to Commissioner Poole. This is done because it was recommended on the agenda as an emergency motion. It could have been brought as a first reading, but since it was on the agenda, the recommendation was to, by the Commissioners, if they wanted to move it to a first meeting, was to do it by motion.
Okay, that's fine, but just for clarification, so I understand going forward, when it was brought to us, could not it have been brought simply as a first reading? I think that, I'm asking here, is this redundancy?
It could have been brought as a first reading, yes.
Okay, and we still have to bring it before the table, right?
It will come before the Commission a second time, yes.
Okay, so it is, okay, fine. You've answered my question. Thank you.
Ms. Briggs, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. On your screen, you should see our, oh, let me go back, consent agenda. Item A is a license to operate fee to the Ohio EPA for Big Island Water Works for calendar year 2021. Item B is a vacation for a portion of Fourth Street, and it's the first reading. Item C is a vacation of an alley located south of 1404 through 1424 Third Street, and it is the first reading. And Item D is a purchase and sale agreement for one parcel through the land bank program.
Having heard these, having heard these ordinances, what is your place? This is the point where someone has to make the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine, I hope you haven't lost your place.
I move to accept the consent agenda, Item C and D, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions, as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Code.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you follow the rule on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Those ordinances are passed, and we must share that curbage with the consent agenda with more than Commissioner Twine to relieve her of that duty every once in a while, Commissioner. So perhaps Ms. Briggs could pass that out to the other six Commissioners.
I'd be happy.
Now turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Briggs, will you present Item Number 1A, please, and we'll do them separately, A and B. A, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Item 1A is an ordinance amending Part 9 Streets Utilities and Public Services Codes, Title 3 Utilities, Chapter 933 Sewer Regulations and Rates, Section 933.07 Definitions, Section 933.15 Computation of Connection Charges, or Section 933.17 Building Sewer and Sewer Connections, Section 933.25 Rates, Section 933.27 High Strength Surcharges, and Section 933.28 Miscellaneous Charges of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky and the Matter and Ways Specifically Set forth herein below.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, and since we've made the modification that we did in the Charter, or the earlier part of the meeting on the agenda, it would be on first reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Twine, hopefully you're out there. This is a piece of legislation that is terribly complicated, but even though it does not apply to our residential water and sewer customers, it is a, it is a rate increase.
Is now exiting.
I wonder if you can give us some, some amplification on this piece of legislation?
Yes, sir, certainly, Mr. President. Would you like me to take 1A and 1B at the same time, or just?
I, I think for discussion purposes, you can probably get into, get into both of those.
Okay. So really, what we're doing with this ordinance modification is we're adjusting five sections of two different ordinance, 933 and 939 of the codified. The first thing that we're looking at are the connection fees on the water side and then on the sewer side. The, these really only affect, the modifications that we're making really only affect new construction and redevelopment. What we did is we went through the fees that we charge now, and some of the fees were in effect in 1980 or before that, and others were in the mid 90s. So these are 25 to over 40 years old, some of these fees that we're charging for private development and new construction. What it is, is it's really just the rate or the cost that the city incurs, whether that's with labor, whether that's with equipment, materials, anything along those lines, because you have the building department, you have the sewer department, the water department, engineering, customer accounting, and law, and finance, and everybody else getting involved when these things happen, and we realized that our rates were extremely low, and what we were charging these private developers were extremely low for most of them, the larger connections were extremely high. So what we did is we went through and got the actual material costs, and then also our labor time, whether that's for building inspections or for our crews in the field, and we then compared it to seven, nine different cities, and figured out where we could be to be competitive and to make sure that we were in line with recouping our costs. So we do have spreadsheets showing all the different cities, where we were and where we will be. The smaller ones, which are the more common sizes, 5/8 inch, 1 inch, 1 and 1/2 inch, those types of things, have gone up, not significantly, but they have gone up, and the larger ones, the 12 inch, went from $75,000 for a developer down to a significantly lower number in the $11,000 range. So that's the first correction that we wanted to make on the storm sewer rates. The modification there really doesn't affect anybody. In the past, our language stated that the $3, $4 rate, utility rate for stormwater would be per bill. The language in the ordinance right now says per equivalent residential unit, and that's not a unit that we can apply through our accounting software, and we actually haven't gone through that process. So we're just changing it to represent and reflect what we've done in the past and what we've always had in the past. The high strength surcharges, that's another section of the sewer ordinance. This really relates to the, our permit for our wastewater treatment plant. We have increased restrictions for algal blooms, phosphorus, things like that, so we're passing small increases, $5, onto the manufacturers that send those waste streams to us. And the last section we would be updating from an engineering side would be that, right now, we collect a lot of raw sludge and sewage from septic systems. You know, most of that is outside the city, and the way that we handle that is, it's really an honor system, and we trust the driver to tell us how much they have within a certain range. We have four or five different tiers, and they tell us where they are. We went through a process over the last year and a half to put in flow meters and to get an actual per gallon charge, but when we came down to the pricing of it, that was well over $100,000 in the $150,000 range to implement a project like that. So what we decided to do instead was, whatever the maximum size of their vehicle is, we're just going to charge them that maximum amount. Most of the time, they're coming with a full vehicle anyway, and this will make them come with a full vehicle. So this is just really getting those, those items in line, and so the residents are really paying for some of these private items. One last thing that we did in two of these areas is we, instead of being 40 to 50 years late, we did add a 3% annual increase on the water and sewer connection fees, as well as the miscellaneous charges to the private septic haulers. So with that, I don't know if Director Reader would like to comment on the minor changes within the Finance Department. It's just really a nomenclature change, but I think other than that, if anybody has any questions, I can certainly answer.
Commissioners, comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
Is this sort of an incentive for economic development, or is this, is there something coming down the road that we're not aware of as of today? I read through all this, I got a million notes here, and I talked to a couple Commissioners today. It seems like this was really, I don't want to say pushed, but for, to come through as an emergency, I was kind of disappointed that we couldn't get a better snapshot of this. And it's hard, I understand, right now with COVID and trying to get all the people and have meetings and...
Through you, Mr. President. It's not really an economic development thing. The thing that's pushing it along, and we've been trying to get this and coordinate this for several months now, but the thing that really makes it essential to get completed quickly is that language in the stormwater charge, because right now, with that stormwater charge being effective January 1st, we really needed to have that in line by January 1st so that the billing can be done according to what the codified ordinance said. These other items aren't as critical on that timeline, but they are items that are in that same ordinance, and we figured we'd bring it all to the Commission at the same time. So they're really, that stormwater rate language was the thing that was driving the emergency when we put it on that way.
Mr. Chairman, for a follow-up, I thought I could, is staff going to be able to have this ready by the first, if it even passed tonight? I thought I read the paragraph in there that they were concerned about having it ready. I guess I got the wrong packet.
Through you, Mr. President. Yes, we will have it ready. I don't know, obviously, now that it's a first reading, we'll have to go through that So that's, you know, we'll go through that and, accordingly to that.
Mr. Twine, to be clear, this, this legislation does not represent something that your department threw together over the weekend, does it? It represents a volume of work by Assistant Engineer Josh Snyder, and I, and I know that he has tediously moved through this. I'd like you to just talk about the effort it took to pull this together, to get us, to get it to us this evening.
Yeah, Mr. President, this actually started over a year ago in getting rates from other cities and comparing those rates with these various other communities. It's stuff that we have been looking at and considering for quite some time. He was putting together that bid package for the, the weigh station and the flow meter, and once we realized the cost of that, that was middle of this year, and we realized that wasn't something that we wanted to spend $150,000 on. So this is something that we've been working on, the various components and pieces and parts of it for well over a year now. We've been in discussions with the different law directors on the different legislation as well, and we've been updating them, and I, it's been a blessing to work with Brendan and get this pushed through as quickly as he was able to do it, since he's only been here for about a month and a half, but we've definitely been working on this for quite some time to make sure that every, all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed for each one of these items.
And again, to reiterate this, this has no effect on our, on our residential, residential customers, that's correct.
Right, yes, there, there is no, anything that's in the ordinance for the residents, the rates and those types of things, it doesn't affect, it doesn't change any of that. This is really private, whether it's manufacturing, haulers, those types of things, developers.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
So I, I too had some questions about the, about whether we should pass this on in one reading or two. I'm satisfied that we really do need to, at the next meeting, pass the 1B as emergency legislation, just to deal with that accounting quirk, if you will. The other one, however the Commission decides to vote on that, I'm fine either way. But, and I really do appreciate the context that Aaron, or the explanation and the context that Aaron provided. It was a lot to get out of the memo, and the explanation helped make it make sense for me. I do want to touch on a related topic. It's a longer-term item, but I think it's an important item as we're talking about rates, because, and there are a lot of people that are concerned about whether the rates that we're charging are fair or unfair. That's a concern that's held across the United States. I don't think there's a single community in any, in any state right now that isn't having to talk about water and sewer rates. The EPA has pushed hard for many communities to make a lot of expensive improvements. We should be particularly conscientious about that because much of our economy is reliant on water and tourism, and so we need to do our part, but the expenditures that we're making are not items that have been entirely within our control. The EPA has required them, and Mr. Twine and his team have done an outstanding job. The EPA has required them, and Mr. Klein and his team have done an outstanding job of minimizing those expenses and maximizing the result. But I do think at some point in time, we need to take a look at the question of whether we are disincentivizing conservation. And I'm not suggesting that we are, but I would at some point like to get a look at whether we are matching our fixed customer fees with our fixed system expenses, and then the variable component, that is what we charge for water and sewer, whether that is matching up with the variable component. Because if someone makes, now, obviously, if everybody reduces consumption by 20%, we're going to have pretty much the same bills, because, I mean, not a huge portion of these bills are variable. But I would like to, Mr. Klein, get a look at that at some point down the road. I know you've got a lot on your plate, but at some point, I would like to take a look at that equity component, if you will, or the question of whether we're categorizing fixed and variable expenses in a way that's consistent with experience at the plant level and the system distribution level, or collection level, and then the customer level. Thank you.
Additional questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Yeah. With regard, I do have some, I appreciate it before we get back, have to come back and vote again on this, that I get that information that Mr. Klein spoke of about justifying these changes. Particularly the data from, that they use from other municipalities, and the cost associated with it that arrived at the conclusions for how much we're going to change, what these rates are changed to. May I ask, on this engineering permit fee Schedule B, where the 5 eighths, 5 eighths three-quarter inch, I presume that's water, fee has gone up to $1,044? Am I, are we talking about the same thing? Is that what that is? Mr. Klein? I'm just trying to make sure I understand what I'm reading.
Yes, three, Mr. President. Let me, I'm trying to pull that up so I know exactly. So the...
Connection charges for Fee Schedule B, the 5 eighths three-quarters, I presume those smaller water meter charges represent, represent homes for the most part?
Yes, sir. Those are typically homes, smaller businesses.
Okay. Then if I understand correctly, that rate has gone from $202 to $1,000, correct? Which is the ordinance below? And the number isn't, isn't, you don't have to be precise, I wanted to make sure I'm reading these charts and coming to the right conclusion. Page three, is that the original charge? And page two is the computation for the new?
No. So, three, Mr. President. Unfortunately, these are very confusing. There's five or six things for each different rate, for each different item. If you look at Schedule B, the new Schedule B that's in there, it's hard to see in the ordinance, because we changed it from a list to that spreadsheet. And the rate for the 5 eighths is going from 900, for the three-quarter inch, it's 1,144 to 2,500.
Okay, it's going to double. Okay, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this. Since, I can either come to your office, whatever, we're going to need a better explanation, I'm going to need to understand this before I vote for this. But the point, the point I'm making is, those are residential taps, and those costs are passed on to the residents. So I need to see, look at the big picture of how, and personally, I would be very much in favor of encouraging residential development here. And so the question is, how badly does this disincentivize developers from doing that? And not something we're going to come up with a question, discuss now, but I need the commission to give that some thought. It appears to me that we have, for the purposes of reducing charges to factories, we have doubled, and we'll find out later when I get a better explanation, significantly increased the cost to residential building. And so, when I talk to you later, an explanation of what our work is involved in it, so I can understand that it's justifiable to charge that kind of money. I'd like to point out, in the writing that you suggested and that you, that you gave us, you indicated that part of the cost was tied to whether or not the developer redid the work, I mean, after he dug up the hole, whether or not he, whether he redid the landscape. And that you factored that into this, this charge, which the developer is responsible to do that. And charging every developer for work that might not be done by a SCOF laws, that we're responsible to get out of them, does not, is, I'm having a problem with. And if I misinterpreted it, you can, you can re-educate me between now and the next two weeks. So I'm probably going to, just, just to be consistent, say no on this as it is, and when it comes up for second reading, I'm subject to vote yes if you've explained things away. But thank you.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Mr. Meinzler, you're on mute.
What'd he say?
Can you say it one more time, Mr. Meinzler?
Yes, one more time.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No, just for...
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Hello?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed on the first reading. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number 1B, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item 1B is an ordinance amending Part 9 Streets Utilities and Public Service Codes, Title 3 Utilities, Chapter 939 Water Regulations and Rates, Section 939.01 Service Installation Connections to Water Manes or Distribution Pipes, Section 939.03 Setting Tap Charges, Section 939.04 Setting Connection Charges, Section 939.05 Private Service Lines in Same Trench with Private Sewers, 939.06 Service Lines Equipped with Water Meter, 939.17 Non-Receive a Bill of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the Matter and Way Specifically Set forth here and below.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, A, or excuse me, B, at first reading under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I think we may have lost Mr. Murray. That ordinance is, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number 2, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 2 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or the finance director to expend funds for the cleanout and disposal of the sodium hydroxide tank at the Big Island Water Works plant in the amount of $28,671.78, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
I believe it's Commissioner Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, can you shed some light on what went on here and how you justify these numbers?
Yes, sir, absolutely, Mr. President. So at Big Island, we had a tank that is actually a concrete tank in the basement that we noticed the material that is stored in it, which is sodium hydroxide, was not being as effective as it was previously. We realized after doing some investigation that one of the eye wash stations outside was leaking and a valve was, was leaking in the wall that caused infiltration and water to get into that tank. So the crews fixed all of that, but then we had to get rid of or dispose of all the material in that tank, because it's no longer allowed to be used in the treatment process. So our guys hooked up a garden hose and realized that it was going to take about two months to completely drain that tank, and then they would still have to get somebody in there to clean all the sludge and everything out of the bottom of it. So being that we only had one tank online, they went out and got several, they got several quotes, they got three quotes, and the one quote that they got was less than $10,000. And that was the only one that they received for somebody that would actually clean the tank and get the sludge out and dispose and haul the sludge. So we prepared the purchase order for that project. Well, we had estimated about 1,000 gallons of material in the tank, and when it came down to it, it ended up being a two-day job, and they had 5,814 gallons of material in the tank. And that brought the price, that increased the price from $9,167 to $28,672. So that additional disposal and additional hauling and the labor and the extra day added up very quickly. Our crews realized, you know, after that second day, that we'll try to do the second tank in-house, and we'll try to handle that internally. But these are real costs, this is no different than what we would do on a normal project with, with quantities, with change orders and things like that. But being that we're now over $10,000, we cannot pay the invoices that we have without coming to commission for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, comments or discussion? Ms. Briggs, will we call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number 3, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 3 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Braunhall Engineering and Surveying Company of Avon, Ohio, for the East Monroe Street resurfacing project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris, a brief.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, this is pretty simple. It's embarking on a very long journey, and this is the very first step. I understand that surveying has to come first, and this process, or this project is really out there more than a year after the surveying is done. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is the resurfacing project of Monroe Street from Decatur to Megs. And when we applied for the NPO funding, that is really federal highway money through ODOT, we have to follow the federal guidelines. And one of those is obviously to make sure we stay within the right of way, so they want to make sure we do the survey at the onset of the project. Construction's not expected till 2022, but we are, we do have to get these steps out of the way to begin with. Good thing is, is that they pay for 80% of it, so it's over $11,000 for the survey, but the city pays 2,200 while ODOT picks up the other 8,800.
Excellent. Commissioners, comments or discussion? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number 4, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 4 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Meter Public Funds Incorporated of Dublin, Ohio, for investment advisory services, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Reader, I wonder if you can share with us the process for choosing, choosing this company? I know it's, I know there's a competitive process that you put forward, and I'd just like you to share that with us.
Absolutely. Through you, Commission President, this has gone through the Finance Committee. They are the ones that had the selection committee. We went through the RFQ process. The selection committee suggested that we go with Meter Investment Services, and that's what you'll have in front of you. Currently, just for your background, we only deal with one broker-dealer for our investments. This is a company that I can log into at any time, see what investments they have to offer, and select an investment for the city. Moving with meters, we will have access to over 100 broker-dealers. So obviously, it's going to be a larger pool of investments that we can select from. This will give us the greatest bang for our buck and stretch our dollars even further.
Excellent. Commissioners, questions or comments? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present our last item, item number 5A, please? We'll set, we'll treat them separately, A and B.
Yes, Mr. President. Item 5A is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Erie County Auditor's Office for the collection of the city's transient occupancy tax, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of...
I move for the adoption of ordinance 5A under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Reader, there are very few things in life that are truly free, and it appears that this is one of them. They're doing this at no cost.
Absolutely. Through you, Commission President, uh, we're thankful. The Erie County Auditor's Office has the on, online software collection already in, in-house that they offer, so what they offered is to allow the city to piggyback on that software and not charge us any fees for the collection of our lodging tax. So, our residents that have, uh, transient rentals here in City of Sandusky will be able to go online through the Erie County Auditor's Office and file the 3% lodging tax that comes to the city and at the same time file the 4% lodging tax that will go to the county.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Reader. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item 5B, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item 5B is an ordinance amending Part I Administrative Code Title 193 Transient Occupancy Tax, Section 193.06 Reporting and Remitting, and Section 193.07 Penalties and Interest of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the matter and ways specifically set forth here and below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance consistent with Section 14 of our charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Reader, I think your explanation covered both A and B, so I don't think we, uh, need to, uh, go through this again. Commissioners, do you have any comments or discussion on, uh, on item B of this, of this ordinance?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Yes, I'd like to know on, uh, since on item B, but we have a list from the, uh, auditor's officers available so that we know how many people and what, who has, uh, actually registered. Can you get that at any time we want? Zoom, it's public record.
Through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Poole, yes. And we currently do already work with Erie County because we give them the information of people that should be filing for the city so that they have the information for the county collection, so we have been working with them, but partnering, partnering like this definitely will be able to keep an eye on everyone and make sure they're filing. We can get that list at any time.
Do we have a, uh, formal process for ensuring that, uh, folks who are benefiting from this are actually registered? A way to check on, check on the validity of this, of the, uh, people using it?
Through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Poole. We do have a employee down in code that monitors the transient rentals currently, so she'll be still monitoring those and be able to check that list of what she has as rental property available in the city, in the city compared to who's paying the tax.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Briggs, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report. Mr. Whoopser, you're up.
Thank you, Commission President Brady, Commissioners, audience and staff. I will do my best to be brief this evening. I know the Browns are playing a meaningful game on Monday Night Football for the first time in a very long time that at least some of the citizens are going to be very interested in watching. I will start as usual with the donations. Uh, first, representatives of Fireland Regional Medical Center donated approximately 50 hams to the Sandusky Police Department. We wanted to thank them for providing a delicious holiday meal for our officers. Uh, thanks for their donation. Uh, our community impact officers were able to pay that forward and deliver the quantity of those hams to city families in need, along with a family that recently had a tragedy take place. We'd ask for a motion to accept that generous donation from Fireland Regional Medical Center.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is certainly approved with our thanks.
Also, a thank you to Construction Equipment and Supply for donating the use of a lift worth approximately $1,300 to the Division of Facilities and Properties for the purpose of decorating this holiday season. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to Construction Equipment and Supply.
And I believe Commission President Brady may have a prop for our final donation of the evening. I, I hope you still have that. A, a donation of $2,000 was received from Environmental Design Group to go towards youth scholarships. Uh, this check was presented to us in person last week, uh, but we'd ask for a motion to accept it this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion, and I will lead the discussion here. Uh, Mr. Whoopser, um, a man of my age, when, when I have to show up with a prop, it is absolutely necessary that you share that with me several times during the day I have to show up with a prop.
I knew that.
I have left that prop in my office. I'm having this discussion in my, uh, in my home, but I assure you, I have not attempted to cash that check. It's much too large to shove through the, uh, through the deposit slip at, uh, at Sabista Bank.
Wonderful. Well, we, we will, we will make sure that we post the big check picture on Facebook then, and, uh, this was, uh, EDG was making donations to some of the communities in which they're looking to, or where they're working, and they asked us where was an area of need. Uh, we had our first graduate of the Sandusky, uh, Youth Commission last year. We had talked about awarding them scholarships and everything going on in our budget that slipped through the cracks. This is going to help us catch up on that and make it right with last year's class, so we're very thankful for EDG, uh, for that gift, and I'd ask for a motion. Uh, did you, you already did the motion, didn't you?
We did, yeah. Yeah, I apologize.
And I don't have the excuse of being old, uh, for my forgetfulness, so I, I, I apologize for, for almost bringing the second motion. Uh, and I will stop digging at this point, move on to new and old business.
Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, and it certainly is with our thanks that it's very meaningful from EDG to, uh, to provide those funds to us. Thanks, and, uh, I, I will, uh, I will bring that, uh, I bring that prop to the city and, uh, and present it to the city for safekeeping.
There you go. Uh, so moving on to new and old business, uh, starting in RFP will be advertised over the next few weeks to accept proposals for a new mail machine lease. Our current unit lease is expiring and needs to be replaced. Uh, staff will bring back legislation soon as a vendor is selected. Uh, moving on to the police department, Administrative Assistant Wendy Roach, Roach has announced her intention to retire effective January 6th of next year. She has worked for the police department for over 30 years, and we appreciate her for her many years of dedicated service. Thank you, Wendy, you've done a great job and congratulations. Also, we had the first snowfall of the season earlier this month. The street department did a fantastic job keeping the roadways as clear as possible. Uh, thanks for their hard work. Uh, we only had a few minor accidents on the street during that time, and I too also heard, uh, compliments on what was a difficult snowstorm canceled all the area schools that we got out there and under the circumstances did a great job. Uh, for the fire department, I had the honor of swearing in, uh, with Assistant, or, uh, interim chief Green Keegan Lobzinger, started with the department on December 11th, uh, so we're excited to begin to be able to fill some positions as vacancies arise, uh, in that and other departments. Also, Public Works, our Tree City USA and Growth Award application has been submitted to the Arbor Day Foundation. In 2020, per capita investment in trees increased from 1,556 to 8,003. Special thanks to Scott Cromer, Nate Lymeister for running a stellar tree enterprise during a very challenging year, uh, with staffing and other, other things coming up. Uh, also, we're thrilled to share that the Jackson Street Pier and Shoreline Drive projects were selected to receive the honor award from the Ohio American Council of Engineering Companies for 2021. Uh, congratulations to Osborne Engineering and City Architecture for their contribution to these projects, which are being recognized for exhibiting a high degree of innovation, complexity and value. Uh, so thank you, Commissioners, for hanging in there in those projects, which, uh, had an equal amount of, uh, political complexity in addition to the engineering complexity that was necessary to get those done, and we appreciate, uh, your engineering on that. Also, unfortunately, due to the contractor quarantine in the asphalt plants, the J.C. Park Connector Trail and the common driveway off of Franklin will not be completed until the spring. Uh, similarly, since the city just received environmental approval from HUD for shore stabilization in Shoreline Park, that project will be pushed back until after the ice melt. Uh, moving on, streets and traffic have successfully collected leaves from each zone and are currently moving through each for a second round of collection. If residents cannot meet the schedule, there'll be a drop-off area for bagged leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance to the City Service Center seven days a week until January 11. Property owners are encouraged to visit our website at www.cityofsandusky.com ex slash construction updates to view the current schedule and to call 419-627-5829 if they have any questions or concerns. Uh, with the arrival of cold temperatures, we'd like to remind residents of a few extra steps to take to avoid frozen water lines inside and outside of their homes, including setting thermostats at 55 degrees minimum, insulating exposed pipes and letting the cold water faucet trickle continuously during extreme weather events. Uh, moving on to the planning department, we just have some scheduling. Uh, Arts and Culture is meeting Tuesday, December 15th at 5:15 PM. December Landmark Commission meeting is canceled. December Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is canceled, and the regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 21st at 4:30 PM. All meetings will be held virtually and can be viewed on the city's YouTube page. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to insert any questions or take comments from the Commission. Thank you.
Commissioners, uh, questions or comments for the city manager?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harris.
Uh, yes, uh, I just, uh, wanted to touch on a, uh, email that was, uh, sent out, uh, I believe, uh, December 4th, um, just regarding, uh, the possibility of us, uh, taking a look at expanding the, uh, areas where, uh, transient rental, uh, might be permitted within the city. Uh, that being said, uh, I'd just like to, uh, show my support, uh, in taking a closer look at that. Uh, I've had, had a, shared a few, uh, brief discussions, I would say, uh, with, um, with some fellow commissioners as well as some, uh, city staff, uh, regarding this, and we, we all do indeed, and, uh, you know, agree that it is not a very, uh, black and white, uh, topic of discussion. Uh, we all believe there's a lot of gray area to, uh, sort through as we begin to kind of navigate many of the, uh, uh, pros and cons, not only in the short term, but also, uh, in the long term. So, uh, yeah, so that being said, uh, you know, I would hope that, you know, perhaps, um, rather than just, uh, just taking a look at, um, at what was suggested, uh, in that email, but also looking at, uh, some of the main corridors, uh, perhaps such as Hancock and, uh, that of Tiffin Ave or Warren or, uh, even Cleveland Road. Um, so, uh, yeah, that concludes, um, my, my little tidbit for tonight.
Additional questions for, uh, city manager?
Uh, through, through the Commission President to Commissioner Harris, we have received comments from a few Commissioners related to, uh, some suggestions based on what we've, uh, put out as to that process. What we're going to try to do is, I have a meeting, I believe, later this week with planning, uh, is to go over the recommendations we've got from each Commission, get back in touch, and then kind of lay out a process from there, uh, as to going forwards. So, uh, consider your points duly noted. I, I do think that makes a lot of sense along those corridors. Uh, we want to make sure we take in to account the other feedback we got, get back in front of everybody, make a decision and then begin the public process there. But thank you for, for bringing that up.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
On that same topic, uh, i- it's pretty clear that, but at least to me, that, uh, that kind of, the, the change of, uh, the overlays to do, uh, transient rental, the opinions are going to be varied and, uh, the efficacy of doing this is, is going to be tied from neighborhood to neighborhood differently. Uh, I suggest that, recommend that as we go forward, we recognize that we already have a process in place that was, uh, that we passed a long time ago to, uh, that guides us on how to get a piece of property included in an, how to make an overlay for a neighborhood, and that we be very careful that we follow that because that's what the, the public is expecting, because that's what we voted on, and that we'll need a good explanation to justify modifying that process to, uh, rapidly move into larger areas being designated as, uh, transient rental. So, that's just my tidbit for that, that we just be sure that we follow along what we said we were going to do when we passed the legislation originally. Thank you.
Additional, uh, questions for, uh, city manager? Next item on our agenda are items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington, that would be, I believe.
Since we, uh, discussed water a little bit tonight, uh, at some point, I, I also talked to, uh, at least two Commissioners today, and I've been bouncing this idea around about water conservation, and that actually saves at both ends for residents. I wish we had a reward system for residents that conserve water use. This would create less treatment, less labor and more capacity at the wastewater plant. Just something to think about going forward, maybe down the road. I had a brief conversation with Mr. Murray today, and I think he had some, uh, he was on the pretty much same page as me. See if he could do maybe a follow-up with that on his ideas or thoughts with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I, I agree with Commissioner Waddington, and additionally, while we're on the discussing of water, um, I think in August, we put together a, uh, passed legislation, uh, adjusting our shut-off policy, and I would appreciate it. We get a, uh, feedback on how that went. It's been three months. I think at the time, we, we, uh, asked that we get feedback. We should, should evaluate whether it had, what effect it had, especially as we're going to the public with more changes in, in the, uh, uh, ordinances dealing with water, even though it's not directly related. Uh, water is a big topic in the community and we need to be sure that we're keeping the public as fully informed as possible, that what we're doing is in their interest. Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Reader, I wonder if you can, perhaps you in conjunction with, uh, Mr. Klein could provide us with, uh, kind of an update on, uh, on the water shut-off and how effective or ineffective that, uh, that new policy has been.
Sure. Through you, Commission President, through to Commissioner Poole, we have been monitoring this. I don't have the figures, but our shut-offs have gone down even now in December. Uh, we have shut-off scheduled tomorrow morning, so that's when I want to compile the data to see how many people are still on the shut-off list, but it has worked very well. People like the system. People were very receptive to the payment plans that we put in place, so I'll get that data back to everybody.
The next meeting is perfect. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, uh, Ms. Reader, I, I certainly, I should have I should have prefaced that with asking you to produce that in the next, in the next meeting or two would be great.
Thank you. That's exactly right. It's, whatever's been done is done. We're just evaluating for future purposes how we think it went. So, next couple of meetings would be fine. First of the year.
Additional items of old business, Commissioners? Items of new business. Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session for pending litigation.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray.
I would just like to note that I will be abstaining from the vote and from participation in the executive session, given that I either have or may be perceived as having a conflict, maybe not under Ohio ethics laws, but certainly as a lawyer. So I'm going to stay on with that altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ms. Briggs, will you hold the motion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
That motion is passed, and that executive session is set. Any other items of new business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, not an item of new business, but if you would, for the purposes of the public, explain how we're going to do this executive session. What you wrote to us, explain it to me, and just tell folks what we're going to do so there's no questions later.
Ms. Briggs, I know that you sent out a communication to everyone this afternoon, and I wonder if you'd just kind of reread that communication, explain how this is going to work for those of us having this meeting virtually and those onsite.
Sure, Mr. President. I just walked through it with both our Stuart and our IT Department and our Law Department. So Stuart is going to, and I apologize, I'm searching my email right now so I could just tell you. But Stuart is going to put up the city seal for the purposes of the public, and we will, or the Commission will go into executive session through a conference call, and then reconvene when that phone call is finished for adjournment and whatever else you need.
So to be clear, Ms. Briggs, each Commissioner, not there in person, other than Commissioner Waddington and Commissioner Poole, will dial in the number you provided to us, and then Commissioner Waddington and Commissioner Poole will go to second floor and access the same conference call that we are accessing.
Yes, Mr. President.
Excellent.
That's it.
Commissioner Poole, that enough clarification?
Perfect. Public now knows, public now is aware exactly what we're trying to do, what to expect. Thank you.
Ms. Briggs, I have a question for you. It seems to me that I am to set a public hearing for something this evening, but I don't recall what it is.
Yes, Mr. President. Hold on one second.
Mr. Chairman, I think that that note is next to the flag for the check at home.
You know, I already forgot that.
Mr. Through you, Mr. President, the public hearing is to give an overview of the 2019 CBPG program. It has to be done by year end.
Excellent. Can I have a motion, Commissioners, to set a public hearing for the overview of that program at our December 28 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Hearing no objection. I suppose we should call the rule on that motion.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That public hearing is set for December the 28th. Any other items of new business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington.
For clarification, is our next meeting, I hope the clerk's on, is it Tuesday, the 29th?
So, through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Waddington, the schedule is for the 28th, and I believe that the Commission or Commissioner Brady wanted to keep the 28th meeting.
Okay, gotcha. Good. Super.
You're trying, Commissioner Waddington, you're trying to find my third misstep in a row, weren't you?
[laughing]
Well, it didn't work. I do have an item of new business, and it's more of a prop for Commissioner Waddington, although I'm not sure he deserves it anymore. Commissioner Waddington, as most of us know, was very instrumental in pigging back off of Ogo's Raising Gifts for Kids at Christmas this last weekend. And in spite of a downpour at various times, that drive was extremely successful. My thanks to Commissioner Waddington for spearheading that and looping a few of us Commissioners into participating in that, and certainly my thanks to Chief Oliver and the eight or nine police officers that showed up for us, you know, for that event also. I know that, I know that we filled about three-fourths of a very large panel truck. In addition to that, we filled an envelope full of cash. So a lot of young people out there are going to have a Christmas, a little better Christmas than they would have had had we not made those efforts. So thanks to all of you, and a special thanks to Commissioner Waddington for, as he usually does, spearheading those kind of things. Thank you, Commissioner Waddington.
Thank you.
Any other items of new business?
Commissioner President, this is a shall, Reader. I would like to set, request you to set a public hearing for the first reading of the 2021 budget for the December 28th meeting also.
Commissioner, can I have a motion to set the first reading?
So moved, so moved.
And motion and a second discussion. Hearing no objection. We probably should take a vote on that issue also, Ms. Briggs.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Motion is passed, and that hearing is set for on the 2021 budget. Thank you, Ms. Reader. There are no other items of new business. I'll ask Ms. Briggs to provide us with any communications from residents regarding city business.
Yes, Mr. President. We have two items, and if I could just, I was receiving some text messages from our staff. So also in regard to the executive session, if you guys could keep your teams live, but just press mute, I think that that should cover it from year end, and then we'll come back to the same teams meeting. For our audience participation, Barbara Sicilies of 203 West Water Street in Sandusky wrote in two comments. Number one, what is being done to retain businesses downtown? I just read recently that Encore and Forte are moving out. And secondly, while I realize there is a lot to plow and shovel after a snowstorm, it's important to keep the Sandusky Bay pathway clear and free of ice. Our second comment comes from Tim Schwanger of 362 Sheffield Way of Sandusky. The Development Director's position has been filled at a salary of $107,000. Will this position see an automatic increase in salary of $10,000 for the COVID salary reduction and an additional 3% January 1st as part of the yearly cost of living wage?
So, through the Commission President, I can take a stab at answering those, and if any other staff want to jump in, but I have no issues answering. As far as both Encore and Forte, my understanding is that both of those businesses were a decision between the landlord and the business whereby the landlord of both of those businesses was looking to go in a different direction. I know the Encore, not the Encore, but the Forte building was recently purchased by someone who I believe has plans for what they want to do with that building. We had actually pretty good conversations with both Forte and Encore about potential sites for them. Unfortunately, the right site for Forte, which he told us very early in that process, was likely to be somewhere on a major corridor, and he ended up finding that on Perkins Avenue just outside the city in Perkins Township. But we did reach out and work with both of those entities. The one, and we are actively in the process of both working with existing businesses directly or through partners like Akadak to make sure that we're retaining them. I will say that I do worry about all of our small businesses due to the impact of them on COVID-19 and the pandemic, and the Commission supported a round of small business relief to the tune of $165,000 last spring. We do have an additional $150,000 in CARES Act funding that we're working on small business relief, and we've been in active conversations with local foundations, the counties, Akadak, shores and islands, about what more needs to be done. There was a recent report published last week in the Columbus Dispatch that said upwards of 60% of locally owned Ohio restaurants could close this winter. If you think about it, particularly food and beverage, they had the opportunity to do a lot more outdoor business this past spring and summer. As winter ends, and more of that business will be done indoors, and the public has less confidence dining indoors than they do outdoors, as well as us having a highly seasonal location or highly seasonal business. Always January, February, March, April are the slow months, even when we're outside of the pandemic. And so we do need to continue to do everything we can and will continue to do everything we can to try to help those in need. But these are very scary times, and in addition to what we can do locally, you know, more support from the state and federal government is critical to be anyone in retail or particularly food and beverage right now. But we'll continue to actively do what we can to support them, whether that's good advice, whether that's direct financial support. But it's an issue that we're taking very seriously, and are urging partners throughout the community to also take it as seriously as we are. Your second question, as it related to the Sandusky Bay pathway, we are committed to in providing maintenance to the Sandusky Bay pathway this winter. In fact, the vast majority of what I heard were compliments about the maintenance of that. It's always going to be a challenge, just as it's a challenge on our streets. But Aaron Klein, the Director of Public Works, and his crews beneath him are taking the maintenance of the pathway seriously, and will continue to take it seriously as we move forward. And then finally, to answer Tim's question regarding Jonathan Holliday, our new Community Development Director, no, that starting salary actually begins in January, and for his entire 12-month probationary period, will be at that rate, which is, you know, significantly less than what our previous director was making once his salary had been restored. So we'll actually have a savings in that position for at least the next year, and we're not anticipating any administrative raises in 2021. We're anticipating restoring people to where they were going into 2020 after they had taken a reduction for all of 2020 after the pandemic hit. But there will be no raise for Jonathan or any other administrative employee in 2021. So that $107,000 salary will be good at least through next year, and then likely subject to any standard traditional increases from there, which I do not believe we've actually done 3% for administrative employees. I think it's generally been in that 2% range. But that's my answer to those questions. I hope that they have given people the information they needed.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. We'll spend this meeting and move into executive session.
We gotta go upstairs, right?
Yep.
We're going second floor, right?
Yeah, I'm going to John first.
I'm leaving myself.
Is there a phone number, or is it already dialed in and set to work?
Dialing in.
Good, good. So I'm gonna head to the room.
Okay.
I'm going to the little boys' room for...
Men's room?
Nah.
Well, I didn't think this meeting would be this long.
So everything's still rolling? Yes. All right? The mic turn off. Yep. Hey, have a good one.
Hey, you have a good one? Hey, you have a good one?
Is Lexa coming up?
He just went off. He just went off. Yeah, he went into the restroom. Yeah, he went into the restroom. They stole the elevator. They stole the elevator. He just... He just... He had to wait for it to come like that. He had to wait for it to come like that. They all called that on there? They all called that on there?
They're all in. They're all in. Yeah, if they're just waiting on him. Yeah, if they're just waiting on him.
Do me a favor. Do me a favor. You wouldn't know what they did because he was back in the office. You wouldn't know what they did because he was back in the office.
I'll only know because they'll come back. I'll only know because they'll come back. And I have my chains on. And I have my chains on.
Okay. Okay. They takes me away. They takes me away.
Okay. Okay.
End of the day, I said, "Thank you for giving it to us to begin with."
Is this gonna be on the record now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who we missing? Mines are with us?
He was just trying to call me. I think he might have been a little confused. Let me call him and make sure he's getting back on.
Commissioner Brady.
Yep, yep, that's what we're waiting on you right now. Just hop on whenever we get a chance.
Alright, man, I can't see shit. This is a struggle.
Alright, alright, I'll see you in a bit. You're live, you're live. Hold on, okay, I'll see you in a bit.
That's great information.
Quit eating them Pop-Tarts all day.
Mr. Chairman, take it he can't hear me.
We gotta wait for Miser.
Is Wes in the commission room? I can only see Dave.
Yep, he's in there.
Yeah, I'm your little guy. What's the concept here? We waiting to get on?
Are we good, sir? We can shut this down or...
What's up?
Yeah, we're just waiting for our Commissioner Mines to join our meeting.
Put him on his cellphone.
Put him on his cellphone. I don't hear about him. Let's go.
Commissioner Brady?
Nothing.
See, they can't. We're muted.
Brendan, how long should I give him?
There you go, you're back.
So... Get him on his cellphone. Just get him on his cellphone.
I believe we do have a quorum currently.
Thank you.
So defer to you if you want to take a motion to adjourn or not.
I think it's appropriate that I entertain a motion to adjourn and end this meeting.
Piece of cake.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I agree. Chief Howard.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're adjourned. Thank you.